Good afternoon. It's good to see each one of you. Hope you all had a good week off to get yourselves all relaxed and ready to go back again. Ms. Micas, have a roll call.
Mr. Como.
Here.
Ms. May?
Here.
Mr. Beatty?
Here.
Mr. Hicks?
Here.
Mr. McCoy?
Here.
Mr. Graves?
Here.
Mr. Manley?
Here.
We have the Watchtall Parish Navy ROTC under Master Chief Douglas Gates today to present the colors and will be followed by invocation with Harold McCoy. If you'd like to stand and join us, please do so.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's great. Well, Lord God, how good and great and excellent is your name in all of the earth. We say thank you for another day, for this opportunity to come, Lord, to do the business that you have made possible for us to do. We lift up now this school district, Watchtall Parish School System. We lift up those, Lord God, who are being served by this district, our students, their parents, our teachers, our administrators, our central office personnel, our superintendent. We pray that your guidance and leadership be prevalent in our lives. We pray for our school board, pray for our president of this school board and the job that he is doing. Continue to bless and keep us in your care. We ask now that you would let our school district continue to be successful in every area and, Lord God, that it would be a beacon light for others to seek. We pray now that you would bless this meeting. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Board, I need a motion to approve the minutes from the September 10th meeting.
Motion second.
Motion in the second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? There's none. Thank you. On today's agenda, we need to amend by adding item number seven under permission to bid to the agenda. I need a motion to amend.
I so move that we amend the agenda.
Second.
Motion in the second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? There's none. Motion carried. Now I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So move.
Have a motion.
I so move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Okay. Second. Have a motion in the second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? Motion carry. Thank you. Personnel report?
Nothing, Mr. Como.
Nothing today. All right. Mr. Manley, do we have any cards?
Yes, Mr. Como, we have two. Both of them are from Ross Gregory. The first one is regarding item number two on the Agenda Policy and Procedure Manual. And then the next one is on item number seven, the Sterlington Middle School.
Okay. Item number one, consider naming Richwood Middle Multipurpose Room in honor of Dr. Cheryl Lindlock. Harold McCoy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Listen, it gives me great pleasure to be able to make this motion today. First of all, if you would give me an opportunity to just share with you that this is a person whom I had the opportunity to work with for 14 years as a counselor at Richwood High School. She was administrator. I never forget when I became a school board member, this is a statement she said to me. She said, "Rebecca McCoy, I used to work for you." I mean, you used to work for me. She said, "Now I work for you." And I said, "No, Dr. Locke, I still work for you."[274.83][274.83](laughter) And so I want to just read something relative to Dr. Locke's resume, something short before I make the motion. She received an education in Morehouse Parish and then she did an undergraduate in Grambling State University. We don't hold that against her. As cum laude, student teaching at Richwood High School. Then she graduated from ULM. She got really smart and graduated from ULM, got her masters from ULM, her education specialist, and her doctorate from Louisiana Tech. Then her career began as a loan officer, but she didn't stop there because later she became a teacher in Watchtall Parish School System at Richwood High School. Upon the closing of Richwood High School, she moved to Watchtall Parish High School as the DE teacher, a distributive education coordinator for 15 years. And at the opening of the new Richwood High School, she was transferred as assistant principal for eight years at Richwood. And then she was named the principal in 2009 and served as principal at Richwood High School for a period of 16 years. You cannot look at her and tell that she worked that long. However, under the leadership, under her leadership, the school moved from a failing school of F to a B school. In 2015, Richwood was named a top-gain school for its increased academic progress. Louisiana Department of Education, BESI, visited the school to look at our career center. And I was there at that time. We had an increased dual enrollment program, a career center which houses barber school, the welding school, sports medicine, and a dental program. It's the only program, the dental program, rather, it's the only program located on a high school campus in the state of Louisiana.[396.59][396.59](applause) The other programs that were started was a CNA program, a pharmacy tech program. Athletically, she was, Richwood was the runner-up for football in 2017, a four A state championship basketball, fourth, rather, four state basketball championships. And we started a golf program and a volleyball program under her tenure, during her tenure. Watchtall Parish School projects during her tenure include, but not limited to, a career building, dental building, the front of the school. Many of you have passed by and probably seen pavilions for night grade center, and a pavilion for the south end of the school for multiple grades, a multipurpose room, and a 10th to 12th grade field house, course of Watchtall Parish School System. We just completed and cut the ribbon for the new, well, I'm sorry, renovated field house at Richwood High School, which she's very, very proud of, and so am I. So total, she had, did 23 years as a DE teacher in Watchtall Parish, eight years as assistant principal, 16 years as principal, and she was principal of the year two times and served on the LHSAA executive committee for six years. So because of that and because of her extensive resume and all of the work that she did as a principal in this, as an employee and a principal in this district, I would like to ask the board to consider naming Richwood High School's new multipurpose room in honor of Dr. Cheryl Lindlock. She is here today and I'd like for her, if you don't mind, before we carry the motion, Mr. President, for her to stand.
Okay. We have a motion?
Yes, sir.
All right. Have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in the second. Dr. Locke, would you please stand? All those in favor, yes?
Yes.[524.82][524.82](applause)
Any opposition?
Yes.
All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? And there's none. Motion carried. Thank you very much.
I'd like to say something. I've been involved in this school system for 20 years and I love going to Richwood and helping her. She knows what she's doing and she's done a fantastic job there.
Absolutely.
So thank you for everything you do for this system.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. I know she's coming up. Cheryl and I started teaching together probably over 30 years ago. And Ms. May has served as a high school principal with her and worked with her closely. And just the consistent presence of her at Richwood High School was so impactful. And I appreciate her leadership. I appreciate her friendship. Her husband and chauffeur, as I said, Mr. Howard is here.
Sister-in-law.
And her sister-in-law. So glad to have y'all. But well-deserved. Congratulations, Dr. Locke.
Absolutely.
And she also served on Louisiana High School Athletic Program Board of Directors. And I served with her, so.
Mr. President, did she make a statement?
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I don't really have a whole lot to say. If you all know, I'm not a big talker. I just like doing. I kind of stay behind the scenes and do what I have to do.
You forced me to lie.[602.04][602.04](laughter)
I did. I may have even written you up, too.[605.23][605.23](laughter) But I want to thank the Watchtall Parish School Board. During my tenure here at Watchtall Parish High School, I mean, Watchtall Parish, I really enjoyed working at Watchtall Parish School System. I've done all of my, pretty much all my career, my entire career has been with Watchtall Parish. And I can say that every minute of it, I don't regret any of it, the times that I spent at Watchtall High School and Richwood High School. During that time, I met a lot of people, really through my career, students, employees, staff members. And I, you know, I just really enjoyed the time that I was here. I haven't stopped trying to make impact with students. Everybody tell me that I'm doing too much. The kids used to tell me I was doing the most, and I'm still doing the most, I guess, because I am now working with the West Monroe, not working, but I'm volunteering with the West Monroe Chamber as a mentor in their mentorship program. So I just want to say thank you so much. Rebecca McCoy, I know you initiated this project. Thank you so much for initiating and following through. Mr. Geis, thank you so much. As he says, we've been through a lot. When he first asked me about serving on the LHSAA board, I was scared to death because athletics was not really one of my strong suits at that time. But after 20-some years in administration, I learned the football and the basketball and everything else. And being on that board, I learned a lot and I enjoy being on that board. So thank you. And thank you all for believing in me, trusting in me, and I appreciate this honor today. Thank you.
All right, moving on to item number two, policies for consideration approval, EFAB, BCBB, GAA, JAA, IDDF, IDDFC, JDA, JD. Mr. Adam Hinesucker. Mr. Rice, did you have a specific policy you wanted to speak on?
Regarding just though, policy.
Pardon me?
Procedure policy. Do we speak now or after he's made his presentation?
After.
Doesn't matter to me.
After.
Got nothing more?
Okay. Good afternoon, Board. The Policy Review Committee met on Wednesday, September 24th, to discuss the policies that are current, that are in your packet. Seven of those policies reflect changes that were made by the legislature during the last legislative session. And one of those policies was created internally. That is policy EFAB. And that one outlines the appropriate use of AI for students and employees. The committee reviewed all the policies and agreed to keep the changes the way for presenting them, except for policy IDDF in regards to students with exceptionalities. We added the word approved physical restraint in there. Just to get some clarification, that physical restraint is allowed, but it's the approved definition that's in our policy and in state law. We also had a discussion in that meeting on our policy on corporal punishment, which is JDA. And what we decided to do in that meeting, because there was some concern regarding how the definition of corporal punishment is written in that policy, we decided to move forward with the change that is made in that policy that is outlined in your packet that's reflective of Act 479, the last session. And what that does is it takes physical restraint away from corporal punishment. But to address the concern about the language that's already in policy, what we decided to do was review that language at our next Policy Review Committee meeting when we have that and make those recommendations to have for you at our next board meeting. And based on the recommendation of the PRC Committee, we are asking you to approve these policy changes. And if you have any other questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Any questions?
And just like you said, on the JGDA, the corporal, and I appreciate you addressing that, Adam. But just look, make sure we're not voting on that today, okay?
We're voting on the policy with the changes.
Yes, on the policies. Right, right.
Mr. Como, I'd like to say, as Adam mentioned, all of these policies except one came out of the session, the last session. So they are changed in law. The one session, the one policy that is not is one that we initiated because we feel like it's a need to at least get started, and that's EFAB. It's Employee and Student Use of Artificial Intelligence. Committee had some discussion on this. The use of AI across our society is increasing immensely and very quickly. We had an issue with some deep fake issues first week of school at one of our schools. When you look at our policy, we really have nothing in policy to address that. So that's kind of what started this. We started looking around and talking with other districts, with LSBA. There is really no guidance on the use of AI. So we're one of the first ones to at least start this process. And as you've read this policy, I know, and as I'll say, it is very generic. It defines what AI is. It defines how we anticipate using AI, at least from an ethical standpoint, with our students and our teachers as far as creating assignments and whatnot. Since we started this process, the governor has issued an executive order that is in effect until December 15th, stopping the purchasing of AI-related software and whatnot at the district level. So that has been frozen. I think the governor and the administration realizes this is something we've really got to start back and look. So with all of that said, like I said, this is a very generic policy with definitions of AI, the use of deep fakes. And what I mean by deep fakes is taking a person's face and putting it on another object, another person, and making them look like they were doing those things. Some of those across the state have gotten very graphic. We've been fortunate not to have that so far. But there's no doubt that that capability is out there. The policy simply says it will refer to our discipline manual on that. I say all that to say is, I really suspect over the coming weeks and months ahead, we will have several amendments to this. I have asked, or I've created, an AI task force in the district to be chaired by Haley Holly and Garra Rankin that will include our employees, our students, parents, and community members, where we just try to figure out where AI fits. And that's the big question. Where does it fit in what we do as a school system? So, and I don't really know the answer to that. And I don't think anyone does. So that's a really important thing that we're about to undertake. But again, this is just the first step of what I see as several changes to AI and how it's incorporated, not only in Watchtall Parish, but I think the state is really looking into that as well. So I really suspect more coming out of session, too. So anyway, just wanted to talk about that.
All right.
What was your recommendation again? To approve the policies. All of them? All of, yes, sir. Yes. And then address other, another session. Yes, sir.
What did Sherri say? She's going to...
I'm going to approve.
Make a motion. What was your recommendation or the motion?
We haven't done the motion yet. I was going to let Rice speak before we did the
Thanks, President. Como, and board members, for y'all's time. I wanted to just briefly comment on the Policy and Procedure Manual today. The board votes today on the inclusion and adoption of additional provisions for the Policy and Procedure Manual, the governing document for the Watchtall Parish School Board. This core document creates shared responsibilities for parents, children, teachers, principals, administrators, consultants, and even the superintendent and board members must comply. This document is in salido, recognized as a whole. One cannot pick and choose. The Policy and Procedure Manual is a whole, entire document. The Ten Commandments is a whole and entire document, and a set of construction documents is a whole, entire document. Here is an excerpt of y'all's Policy and Procedure Manual regarding file FGA supervision of construction. Penalty clause of contracts shall be enforced. I remember specifically when this was adopted back years and years ago because there wanted to be an equal footing on projects of construction. The language is clear and specific regarding mandating the enforcement of liquidated damages included in the contracted terms of agreement. The misuse of dedicated public funds is a breach of public trust and could be considered malfeasance in public office. Last month, I began a presentation regarding Sterlington Middle School I never got to finish. Any consideration of a public body's acceptance without contract fulfillment would be a betrayal and misuse of public funds. The contract documents were clear and specific identifying terms and conditions of the required contract for spending public funds, 540 calendar days with required completion per signed contract of August the 14th, 2023, in time for fall of 2023 opening. During the construction period, the contractor was granted a justified time extension of 51 weather days per the contract documents in addition to the 122 days normally anticipated per the contract documents, thus extending the required contract completion to October the 4th of 2023, still in time for a late fall 2023 opening. In order to occupy the facility last fall of 2024, one year later, the project was accepted July the 19th of 2024 with a lengthy punch list allowing the owner to move in. The contract documents were inclusive of liquidated damages clause in the amount of $2,000 a day, and the contractor was assessed $576,000 per contract for delayed performance. Total public funds dedicated and earmarked for Sterlington Middle School of $701,634.80 have been recommended withheld per terms of the construction contract and obligations of the construction.[1266.58][1266.58](beep) To my knowledge, there were no labor strikes. There were no delay of materials. There were no abnormal bad weather. The contractor was placed on formal notice throughout the project of required on-time completion, placed in default May the 14th of 2024 by action of the Watchtall Parish School Board. To my knowledge, contractor made no real effort to increase labor force, work extra hours, or work weekends to satisfy terms of the contract. The community voted not once but twice for this needed project and has recently approved an additional $50 million investment for Eastside Schools. Numerous children never got to attend the new school due to the delayed performance. The school system produces a tremendous amount of yearly construction. This is an extremely slippery slope. Your actions will forever establish an unenforceable precedent. The taxpayers, faculty, staff, and kids deserve their trusted public funds invested for their intended purpose. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a motion to accept the, to approve the policies that were recommended by Adam. All in go.
Yeah, I so move that we approve the policies as recommended by Adam.
Have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in the second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? There's none. Thank you. Item three, consider approve LA Compliance Questionnaire, FYE, June 30th. Ms. Micas.
Good afternoon, Board. You have in your packet the Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire. This document is authored by the Louisiana Legislative Auditor, and it is required of each local government to complete this document and state their compliance on each of the highlighted areas of law. And as you can see, I'm not going to read the document to you, but the document goes through and basically asks about our compliance with state laws such as public bid law, budgeting, code of ethics, et cetera. All of the items listed we were in compliance with for the 24, 25 year. And I request your approval on this document in order to make it part of our audit documents.
Any questions? Have a motion to approve the policy is, I mean, the document is presented?
So move. Second.
Have a motion in the second. All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? There's none. Motion carry. Item four, financial report for August 31st, 2025. Ms. Micas.
You have in your packet the financial statements for the period ending August 31st, 2025. Bring your attention to the first column and the general fund. We're ending the period with 28.9 million in fund balance. That's about 96.4% of where we were at this time last year. A couple of things that are contributing to that. One, we had a decrease in state revenue of 1.4%. We were expecting that due to the loss of students that we budgeted for 25, 26 from 24, 25. The overall revenue decreased about 1.8%, and our expenditures for the period increased 1.6%, which I consider to be a timing difference. If you look from year to year, in those first few months of school, those percentages adjust, kind of ebb and flow through the years. Sales taxes are up. I know in your current August 31 financial statements, we didn't have any sales tax collections because for July and August, those sales tax collections are booked as receivables into the prior year. But I did take the liberty of looking up sales tax collections for the, for the period of the current year to date through the end of September. And we're up five and a half to six and a half percent, depending on the revenue stream for sales tax. If you look at the second column, we're ending the period with 25.4 million in fund balance. This is about 82% of where we were at this time last year. And as we had discussed previously through the budget process, those funds, while we had Esser funds available, we had put those on hold. So we are going to see an increase, a considerable increase in the spending of those funds as expenditures go back to their original sources. It's not that we're adding expenditures, but things that were picked up through Esser funds while we had those funds available are now going back to their original source. So we would see a little bit of an increase in our MNO expenditures as we begin this current year. Also bring your attention to the last two pages, which gives a little bit more information on the general fund and the MNO fund with a three-year history of revenues, expenditures, and fund balances.
Any questions, comments? Thank you, Ms. Micas. Item five, permission to grant easement to Monroe City for water system improvement. Mr. Hempel.
Good afternoon, Board. You're seeing your packet. I've been working with Brian Roberts that's working for the city of Monroe with the Water Engineering Firm. And what they're wanting is an easement by, off of Alberta, be it by the Tri-Stick District Boys Club, if you're familiar with that area. City of Monroe's wanting to upgrade their main water line. So we need to grant them an easement. If you see that diagram of that map, it goes out down to Alberta and it goes down through where all the housing is and goes out to the south. So we need a recommendation to grant them an easement for water improvement for the city of Monroe.
We have a motion for this recommendation.
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion. Have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in the second. All in favor, yes?
Yes. Yes.
Any opposition? There's none. Motion carry.
Thank you, Board.
Item number six, Mr. Hempel, Construction and Renovation Projects Report.
Well, we've had some good weather up in this early fall and hopefully go into the late fall with some nice weather. It's cooled off a lot. We've gotten a little bit of rain. Helps, helps a little bit, but we don't need a whole bunch of rain. But you'll see this list. It's one through seven. And by the first of the year, those items are, be cut by four, four projects, maybe five after the first of the year. So, and then we're looking at our roofing fund. We're looking at four different schools that we've done evaluation on our roofs through Architect Alliance, which I'll be bringing another update for that. But we're working on that. Y'all got any questions on any of your projects? Be glad to, that list is going to shorten back up. But if you notice, permission to bid is going to grow again after the first of the year. So we got plenty of work to do.
Steve, what's the target date on completing the two turf fields, one at Sterlington and one at Watchtall? It's still like November the 25th. We still on go for that?
Yes, sir.
Yep. So I have to understand also that Richwood High School's turf field is supposed to be addressed next year?
It's next in line, I believe.
Right there?
Yes. Do we know exactly after track?
Try to address it after track.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item number seven, the board may enter into executive session to confer with council and discuss prospective litigation. and discuss prospective litigation relative to Sterlington Middle School liquidated damages to Baron Construction pursuant to LARS 4217, A2810, and LA Code of Evidence 506. Do we have a motion to go into executive session to either approve, reject, or take no action on the proposition presented by Baron?
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion?
Second.
Have a second, we'd have a roll call on this one. Ms. Micas?
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Mr. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Manley?
Yes.
Mr. Como?
Yes. We will be in executive session and we'll be back. Pardon me? I didn't hear. You want to address it?
Address now or after?
You want to address now or after Rice?
After.
So we will return after our meeting that will be held. Back here, you're welcome to stay and make your own decision.
We'll meet and talk back here in this one.
Okay. We need a motion to come out of the executive session, please.
Second.
Second, roll call?
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Mr. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Manley?
Yes.
Mr. Como?
Yes. All right. We have the document that has been presented, and we're asking for a motion to either approve, reject, or take no action toward this presentation. Do we have a motion?
I have one, Mr. Como, and I appreciate it. I want first, before I get started on my motion, is thank Rice for his comments a while ago. I thought they were directly on target as an architect associated with the Sterlington Middle School project. It's been a pleasure for me to have the opportunity to work with Rice throughout many years as a board member, and Rice has done a great job in representing us throughout the district on several school projects. I have a lot of confidence in Rice and his professionalism and the job he does, and he did another great job for us to start the middle school. I'm not going to elaborate a lot, but I know the board has been advised constantly and repeatedly during the Sterlington Middle School construction project. It's something that we were closely aware of with the delay associated with Baron completing the job on a timely basis. We had several and numerous conversations with Baron Construction regarding the penalties associated with the failure to complete the construction job on a timely basis per our contract that we entered into with Baron. So there was a contract signed initially by the Westtall Parish School Board and Baron Construction that says that they will complete the job per the specifications outlined in the contract within a certain amount of time. Unfortunately, this contract, or this contractor delayed construction in excess of 180 days, ballpark figure, okay? 188, Rice?
288.
Oh, 288, excuse me, Rice, 288 days. And I can't tell me times I had a visit with the contractor on numerous meetings with our architect, Rice Gregory, and emphasizing that, hey, we would like to see some urgency on this job. We would like to see you picking up the timeline because we're going to hold you responsible as a board per the contract that we signed, which was $2,000 a day that they went above and beyond the time period, okay? And of course, as a board member, I represent the people in the Sterlington area, and I feel like those people got slighted based on the support that they received for this school. They did not, a year and a half delay on construction was embarrassing from my standpoint as a board member. And with all that being said, I'm going to make a motion to the board that the board honors the contract and holds Baron accountable. If it involves litigation, then it will involve litigation to the amount of damages per Mr. Gregory's calculation of $576,000. That's my motion.
We have a motion, have a second?
Yes.
We have a second?
I like to make a motion. Before I make a motion, I'd like to say something. We've been dealing this for a long time. We've been negotiating back and forth. We've come to, I think, a fire agreement. We paid lawyers to go to court, the lawyer fees, you add up, there's no cashews out, it's going to just about be a break even deal. I don't want to see us pay a lot of money on lawyer fees. It could succeed, you don't know what it's going to be. It's going to how long you tie it up in court, and how much negotiation we do back and forth. Every time we negotiate, we spend money. So I'm going to make a motion that we accept the offer from Donald Bear Construction Company and settle on an agreement that he gave us in writing. The amount would be $395,000 and we'd pay him $280,000 and we'd get the rest of it. Mr. Manley will wind up with close to $400,000 in his account. So I'll make a motion that we accept the proposal with Donald Bear Construction.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to the alternate motion. Rice, if you'd like to speak.
If you'd like to speak, Rice is your champion.
I'm going to do whatever you want to do. I've tried to give you all the facts.
If we're going to call them speakers.
Ms. May? Who are we voting on?
Alternate motion.
The alternate motion?
We have a second.
Okay, so who are we voting on?
No, lay vote, motion.
The substitute motion, okay. I'm going to go yes. Mr. Beatty?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
No.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Mr. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Manley?
No.
Mr. Como?
Yes. Motion carried five, two. Thank you. Moving on to evaluation of bids. Mr. Peters?
Good afternoon, board. I have a number of items on these evaluation of bids. We'll start off with FS eight dash twenty-five. That's the warehouse cooler freezer doors. We conducted that bid opening yesterday, and there were no responsive bids submitted by the time of the bid opening. Then we have bid three dash twenty-six. It's our property sale at thirty-four twenty Gordon Avenue. We put this property out a number of times. At the time of the bid opening, there were no responsive bids submitted for the property, and I'll be asking in just a couple of minutes to put this property back out for bid. I believe this property and our Mineral Springs property have not received a bid due to a lack of visibility from the general public, and I'm going to be working with our communications team to promote and advertise that property when we put it back out for bid. Bid number six dash twenty-six, that's Sterlington High School's classroom additions and athletic improvements. The budget on that project, $6,650,000, with the funding source being the Eastside Bond. I'm requesting the board to approve the lowest responsive bidder, Gentry Construction, in the amount of $6,199,000.
Have a motion to accept that bid?
I'll make the motion, we accept the lowest bid on Sterlington High School construction projects by Gentry Construction for $6,199,000, which I might add is $450,000 below the budgeted amount.
Second. Have a motion and a second, all in favor of yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? There is none. Thank you.
That last evaluation of bid, nine dash twenty-six, that's the Mineral Springs property with a budget of $80,000, and we did not receive any bids at the bid opening for that property. Same scenario as Gordon Avenue. We're going to be working on making that property more visible to the public and looking to put that bid back out.
All right. Moving on to the permission to bid. Jared?
Can I add one other caveat on the Sterlington High School project since Doll Anne is here? That bid did include the two alternates, Doll Anne, so we'll be able to put both the alternates in the construction phase, so looking forward to that being done, too. Excuse me, Mr. Como, go ahead.
Okay.
I got a question when you get to permission to bid or Lake Shore Elementary.
All right. Would you, would you all like for us to take these one at a time?
We might as well.
Okay. All right, so for permission to bid, twelve dash twenty-six, that's a small group intervention classroom furniture with a budget of $80,000 and a funding source being Title One.
Motion to grant permission to bid Title One Small Group Classroom Furniture, budget $80,000. Motion and a second, all in favor of yes?
Yes.
Motion carry.
Right, bid thirteen dash twenty-six, that's the front office renovation at Lake Shore Elementary with a budget of $1,300,000 and the funding source being the Eastside Bond.
Okay, on that bid there, according to my paperwork here, I only allowed $926,000 for that bid. You want to come up there, Stephen? Is it one point three million in that? I got it right here. I don't think so. Lake Shore Elementary Front Office, $936,000. I got, I got, let's blow it. The canopy's extra. Nine twenty-six for the canopy. I think they got a... Yeah, I'm still, I'm still on budget, but you had the two together.
You're under. Had those two together.
One point six.
One point six, and I got a... Jack Hayes, okay, okay, okay. You can put it all together now.
Yeah, probably, yeah, we could have said front office and canopy at Lake Shore. Yeah. All right. So it's bid thirteen dash twenty-six.
Any other questions about the other ones, we can do the rest of them all in one.
It doesn't say add canopy, they both were, maybe add them together, but it wasn't on here.
All right, we'll do that. We'll go ahead and do that one. Go ahead, David.
Okay, I make a motion, we'll put it out to bid for that price.
No second.
Motion and a second, all in favor of yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? There's none. Motion carry. Now we can do the rest of them.
All right. Bid fourteen dash twenty-six, that's the canopy at Jack Hayes Elementary, budget of $900,000 and the funding source being Eastside Bond. Then we have bid fifteen dash twenty-six, East Washita Middle School Multipurpose Building, budget set at $2,100,000 and the funding source being Eastside Bond. And then those two property sales, bid sixteen dash twenty-six, property sale at Gordon Avenue, budget of $9,950. And bid seventeen dash twenty-six, property sale at Mineral Springs, the budget of $80,000. And that last item is RFP eighteen dash twenty-six, and that is for IT equipment and supplies. Just to give you some background on that, that is our E-Rate. E-Rate's a federal program administered by the Universal Service Administrative Company. It helps schools afford better internet access and network equipment. And so this category-two funding focuses on what's inside our schools and our data center, things like Wi-Fi, network switches, firewalls, and cabling. Through this program, our district gets significant discounts, often covering up to ninety, up to and exceeding ninety percent of the cost to upgrade and maintain the technology that keeps our classrooms connected. This category-two funding is funded for five years at a time, so this time period's going to be from 2026 to 2030, and Washita Parish will receive approximately $201 per student, which is just over $3.5 million to spend on eligible equipment and services over the next five years. So what we're requesting is the board allow us to put out a request for proposals for the E-Rate category-two products and services.
You said that's all federal funded?
Yes, sir.
We're pretty confident we're going to secure those funds?
Yes, sir.
Does that need to be separate, Jared, or included in the other four items on the E-Rate?
Sorry? It can be included in those.
Okay, I need a motion to approve or grant permission to bid the last five items that's presented by Mr. Peters.
I make a motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor of yes?
Yes.
Any opposition? There's none. Motion carry. Thank you, sir.
All right, thanks.
Before you get started, I would like to make a comment about working with TBA. I've had a great experience working with them. I know we put the bow on the valuation of bids today on one of my major projects this upcoming calendar year, Sterlington High School, and they were totally professional. Did a great job at putting everything together, come under budget, which is, you know, something that I wanted to make sure we did, so I just wanted to say to the board, I've been real pleased with the professionalism and the way that TBA has handled the construction bond proposal work at Sterlington High School. Been a pleasure working with y'all. Thank you. Sorry, Tommy, go.
Thank you, sir. I was looking for my next date. Let's see. Do what? Okay, what's the date actually going to be? Okay, that's what I have. Okay. Our next meeting is on Wednesday, November twelfth, not Tuesday as normal. We've got several different meetings coming up. I'm sure Alain will be sending out reminders about those.
Veterans Day is on November the eleventh.
Mr. Gass?
Thank you, Mr. Como. Just a couple of things. We actually, before fall break, finished our first nine-week grading period. Report cards will go home Friday, so that'll be the first time this year they're scheduled to go. Just a couple of dates I want to remind you of. Our Employees of Distinction Banquet, our Annual Banquet, recognize our employees will be next week, October twenty-eighth, so if you don't have that on your calendar board, please do. I, along with the Superintendent of Monroe City Schools, President of ULM, and Chancellor at LDCC, will be presenting the State of Education on November the third. You'll get some information of that. That'll be on the ULM campus. And then just down the road a little bit, November the fifth, our Student of the Year Luncheon, where we get to honor our great group of our amazing kids, will be also at Value Point on ULM on November the fifth. So that's all I've got. Thanks, Mr. Como.
Thanks, sir. Have a motion to adjourn. A second. All in favor of yes?